Right on time.
Here, here, and welcome to the first meeting of the year. Let's begin today's meeting and hear public testimony on non-agenda items. Non-agenda public items are limited to 15 minutes per topic. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to address the board. Please remember, no deferral of time is allowed. The board asks that speakers focus their comments on issues and not individuals. So, we will have come to the podium citizen Bee Tau and Alex Benavista. You can speak in any order, just state your name. Thank you.
I'm going to speak to the safety issues. The information on the school district website is getting much better. There's a very good video on it, and I was so pleased to see that CTE students Jared Lopp and Ian Kyle were given credit for doing a marvelous job in producing that video that I hope is going to make kids on all of our campuses safer. There are two school site issues regarding safety. Not all the schools have the Students Speaking Out Reporting Program. I think that's a really, really good program, but it's not going to be helpful if it's not accessible to students. Some of the school sites have it right on the homepage so that students can find it, and others don't have it at all. I think it should be accessible at every single website. One of the things I just learned about going, I went to an anti-bullying conference in San Diego, it was excellent, and one of the things that is a good practice is to have safe zones in our schools. For example, a library could be a safe zone. I would like to see all of our libraries opened and be a place where children that are being bullied or are afraid can go and feel safe there. Also, there's a new law that teachers need to be trained, that they cannot be required to report to school officials when it is a district employee that is abusing kids, when they're afraid that a district employee is abusing kids. It's a new law that Jerry Brown just signed. So, I went through the training that the school districts providing to teachers about mandated reporting, and I've got an issue with the information that staff members have to report to the site administrator when it is a district employee that is suspected of abusing children. And that's very intimidating. There is not a requirement in the law that says that teachers have to go report to the principal, because then they're afraid that everybody's going to find out who told, and that's very difficult for someone when it's their colleague. The people they have to report to are simply the San Diego Police Department and CPS, that's it, not the school administrator. And it is up to the San Diego Police Department or CPS to decide if they're going to have to speak to the school administrators about the situation that's being reported. This can affect a criminal investigation of a child pornographer, or any number of horrible child abuse situations that you can think of. Requiring employees to hand a confidential report to a principal and locking it up is also intimidating. There is no requirement in the law. In fact, a school district was just sued, and the teacher was sued because she provided information to someone outside of the mandated reporter laws, and she was personally held liable for releasing information that she should not have. So, that's something to keep in mind. They can be personally liable for breaking that law.
Thank you for your comments. And will we report that and pass it on to our superintendent? Let me also remind everyone that when you begin speaking, the green light will come on, the yellow light will show when you have one minute left, and your time is up when the red light appears and the bell rings. So, at that time, please wrap up your final comments. Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to say I've been trying to get a hold of my specific superintendent, Superintendent Jackson, but have not been able to, was hoping he'd be at this meeting, but he's not. I want to talk, though, about community demographics and how it works for special education as opposed to general education. You know, the way our communities are made up, you have densely populated areas, areas where there's more children, and then areas where there's less children. And the way you guys have it set up is fine for general education, but for special education, you kind of get into situations where you've got overcrowding next to undercrowding, you've got kids that get better than one-on-one, living next to kids that, you know, or get three-to-one attention. The solution to this problem is very, very simple, but you guys are adamant about keeping people in their neighborhood schools, which makes a lot of sense, you know, for general education. How does it make sense for special education when we have these situations? That's all I have to say. Okay.
We'll have the superintendent look into the suggestions that you've made, and also would like to remind everyone that the board does not respond to public comments, rather will direct the superintendent to follow up. Bee Tau has no further public comments. This completes non-agenda public testimony. Thank you for taking the time to speak to the board and the superintendent. Is that person here? Okay, please come to the podium, please. Thank you. No, sorry for the mispronunciation of your name.
Good evening, and to all you honored board members and all, my name's Bill Tall. I own a company called City Farmers Nursery in City Heights, and I just wanted to mention with all the stuff that you have going at you, how great of a job the school system is. We're involved in a lot of schools with donations and gardening programs, and we want to do more, and I'm working on a project for that, but I just want to let you know that it's nice to be able to get the schools and have it easy for field trips and for us to be able to donate things for the gardens, and it's really nice to see so many gardens happening in so many schools. So, I just want to let you know that I'm appreciative, and thank you very much for what you guys are doing for the kids.
Thank you. That was a wonderful way to wrap up public comment. I'm glad we got you in there. Okay, so this does actually complete public comment, and again, thank you for your comments to the superintendent and the board, and we take your comments very seriously. It makes us better at serving our students, so thank you. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and I would like to welcome everyone present today and those watching the broadcast and call the January 6, 2015, regular meeting to order with all board members present. And I have to say, this is wonderful, because this is my first meeting as the new president of the board. Woo-hoo! Yes, yes. Now, if you wish to address the board today and your name is not on the blue speaker form, voila, the list, the blue speaker form list is located at both entrances, and what you can do is sign up with our board officer Cheryl Ward, and also, if you have not already submitted a request for public testimony, you can do so at this time. Speakers on agenda items will be called to speak during the discussion of the agenda item. Once the discussion begins on that item, no additional public speaker requests will be accepted. Public testimony on agenda items is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes per consent or action item, allowing a maximum of 10 minutes per opposing viewpoint. Non-agenda testimony was heard today at 5:01 and will be heard at the end of the meeting as well. May I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Second, okay, all right, we have a second. Please vote. And that passes unanimously? Let's move on to E1, which is King Chavez Arts Academy, King Chavez Athletics Academy, and King Chavez Primary Academy. Action to renew, the action on the renewal of charter petitions and special education agreements. Superintendent Martin.
Thank you, President Foster. I'm going to invite up Susan Parks to talk about this item.
Good evening, Board President, Board Superintendent. This is an action item for three charter schools, the King Chavez Arts Academy, Athletics Academy, and Primary Academy. As noted in the agenda language, staff is recommending a full renewal for the five-year term. We have representatives from the school ready to address you and express their support. The academic details are stated, and I'm happy to go over them. The three schools run a span of grades K through 5. They're all located on a single campus at 415-31st Street, and they've all been open for several terms, and staff is here also to answer questions.
Second. All right. Any, this, oh, and we have, do we have speakers on this item? So, will all speakers come to the front, and you can speak in any order, just state your name. We have Merrill Goldberg, Scott Worthing, Ebony Cartwright, Lynn Woodhead, Gerardo Guevara, Wakas Malik, Lanay Richardson, Ramon Sanchez. And you have a three-minute per speaker, a total of 10 minutes per, well, 10 minutes, a total of 10 minutes. All right?
The whole group, 10 minutes, so maybe two minutes.
Right, so you can have, we'll keep it moving. Two minutes, two minutes apiece, no deferral of time, and 10 minutes of total. State your name and in order.
Perfect. Good evening, board members, superintendent Scott Worthing, the principal of King Chavez Arts Academy and King Chavez Athletics Academy. I started at King Chavez in 2005 as a physical education teacher and have been principal for seven years. I am asking for your full support to continue serving our school community. Our mission statement reads, "We seek excellence in the arts, academics, and athletics from a foundation of love." And when I first heard that, I kind of chuckled. Love, it didn't really resonate with me in public education, but I quickly learned it was about people, building deep-rooted relationships with students, teachers, and their families. It's a wonderful thing. The word "seek" also stood out in our mission statement. As a staff, we are constantly rethinking our methods, adjusting how we allocate our resources to use what we have to make the largest impact on student learning. Currently, we are proud to offer our students a rigorous academic program, ceramics, music, art, physioeducation, and a variety of academic enriching clubs. We pride ourselves on educating the whole child and believe deeply in never giving up on kids. Restorative practices, home visits, mindfulness are the few of the vehicles we do. We take extreme pride in bringing to King Chavez School and have learned a lot along our journey. We look forward to the next five years. I thank you for this time and opportunity.
Good evening. My name's Jerry Guevara. I'm the principal of the King Chavez Primary Academy, and I want to say thank you for your ongoing support in allowing us to serve the Stockton and Logan Heights community of San Diego. We've had a lot of success with your support. We've been acknowledged as a Title I Academic Achievement Award school five times and have maintained an API score over 800, well over 800, for many years now. So, beyond that, I just want to say that it's been a very rewarding experience so far working at King Chavez for nine years myself, and it's because of the relationships that we have with parents, and you'll hear from some of our parents and teachers and students that we've been able to be successful, I believe. So, we look forward to many more years of success with your support. Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name is Wakas Malik. I'm from Pakistan, and when I first came to King Chavez Primary Academy, I didn't know any English. Then my teachers helped me. I kept on improving. Now I'm in fifth grade, and I read above my grade level. Five years ago, my cousin was here giving a speech just like me. I am proud to be here. I love my school because I learn something new every day. My teacher makes learning fun. I like the after-school activities. My school makes me feel safe and like I'm at home. I love my school because it's the best school in San Diego.
Thank you.
I'm so proud to be here. I'm Merrill Goldberg. I'm a professor in the School of Arts at California State University, San Marcos, and I'm director of Center Artes, a center dedicated to arts education outreach and research. I speak on behalf of myself and the numerous other professors from Cal State, San Marcos, as well as my colleagues at UCSD who also work with the school. I fully and enthusiastically support the renewal of the Charter for King Chavez Arts and Athletics in primary schools. They are absolutely wonderful examples of educational excellence. In my capacity as a leader in arts integration and education, I've been partnering with King Chavez for over three years, providing professional development, research-based and rigorous activities, working with administrators to reflect on best practices, mentoring art and music teachers, placing our student teachers at the school and classrooms, and bringing the King Chavez schools up to Cal State to our campus for performances. Without a shred of a doubt, King Chavez is a place where teachers, administrators, staff, and parents see kids as enormously capable human beings, and everyone is invested and dedicated to providing the children, our children, with the opportunities to reach and go beyond their potential. I'm really proud of our partnerships. I wanted to read a brief note from a King Chavez student and then one, a note from one of my students at Cal State, a student teacher. Dear VPA 321 students, that's a class called Learning Through the Arts, thank you for inviting us to CSUSM. My favorite part of the play we saw was when the lion fell in love with the princess, and he had to change, because I learned to never change for others. You will become awesome teachers. And from my students who came and visited the school, and they do regularly, the kids are precious souls, and their school focuses on leading them to college. They have dreams of gaining careers, and it was neat to see their teacher, principal, and vice-principal so involved with the students. King Chavez is a place making a difference in the lives of the kids and the families they serve, and I couldn't be more supportive and grateful for being part of what they do. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Lynn Woodhead, and I'm the third-grade teacher at Casey Arts and Athletics Academy. I've had the privilege to serve King Chavez for 10 years in both primary and arts and athletics academies, and I've seen the evolution of the school and the growth in their academic success. We have an incredible learning environment for the kids and adults and are constantly improving our systems of creating learning experiences for our kids. For example, the use of iPads, technology through the use of iPads in all subjects. Our focus is love, lifelong learning, and involving families in our educational experience. Yes, the curriculum is rigorous, and yes, we are data-driven to meet the needs of our students, no matter where they are academically. However, most importantly, we are preparing the kids to face the challenges beyond the four walls of the classroom and their environments. By giving them real-world 21st-century experiences, these kids are learning global awareness and social justice at an early age, so they can take their experiences, education, and struggles, and channel them to make their communities better, and I am so proud of that. From a teacher's perspective, they're always our kids, no matter if we have them in third grade or when they go off to high school and college. We raise them with a lot of love, and we put blood, sweat, and tears into their success. We want to continue that effort. Please allow us to continue our mission by voting yes on the charter renewal. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leigh Anne Richardson. I'm a kindergarten teacher at King Chavez Primary Academy. This is my eighth year serving the primary academy, and it has been a whirlwind of, as Lynn put it, blood, sweat, and tears, but also many celebrations and happy moments as we see our students growing taller than us and wiser than us in many different expertise and ways, and it has been such an amazing journey so far. King Chavez is not just a workplace for those of us who put it down as our employer on our taxes every year. It's not, it's not a workplace for us. It's become a way of life and a family for those of us who've really dedicated our life's career, our life's work toward educating students. It has become a passion that drives us because we believe in the positive impact that our school is making on the community. The community has so affected me and my family. My husband is also a teacher at the school. We have moved into the community, and our neighbors are our students, and we see them year-round, and it is more of a blessing to be accepted as family into the community, not only at school but in the neighborhood. It has been something that we want to do lifelong. We're very happy to give all that we have to the school because the school gives so much back to us. It's so wonderful to work at King Chavez. I'm honored to teach with such collaborative and creative professionals, and I want to say thank you, a big thank you, to supporting us the past 10 years, and we look forward to the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ebony Cartwright, and I am a parent of two children at King Chavez. One is in ours and one is in primary, and as a parent, I have noticed that the staff, one protects our students as if they're their own children, and as another, they, what drew me first to the school was that each staff member knows every child by name. Not many schools can say that, and that's what made me decide to stay, because they care about each student as if they were their own child, and they cater to their individual learning abilities and social abilities and all that. Yeah, so I appreciate your support with keeping King Chavez as a charter, and I hope that you keep them as a charter in the future.
So, oh, okay. So, we're over the 10-minute total time, but this is your last speaker?
Thank you. I'll make it short and sweet. Thank you very much. My name is Ramon Chunky Sanchez. I am a community liaison for the school. I taught in the classrooms there, taught music with the kids, and once again, I'm real proud to be here again in front of the school boards, like kind of going to church for me, you know? Sometimes I wore it, I had, if I would've worn it, I would've took it off when I came up here. But number one is Cindy Martin, I remember the day that you were elected as superintendent, and I was watching KU SI, I believe, and I said, wow. And then they mentioned you came from Central Elementary in City Heights. Am I correct? And I said, wow, that's even better, because she came from the trenches, you know? If you know City Heights and Central Elementary, we know the kids that she deals with, what she dealt with at that time and probably still is now, but I knew that she had a heart for the kids and education. Thank you very much, and the only one I can mention now is, that I really know is Mr. Barrera. I'm not trying to score any points, Mr. Barrera. I'm not trying to score any points, but man, you're still young, man. You haven't changed a bit. I don't know what it is. You've got to give me the secret, but...
He's singing "Happy Birthday," man.
Oh, yeah? Okay, and all the rest of you, King Chavez has done tremendous work in those neighborhoods with kids that have needed it, and not just kids, but the parents, the parents, very big part of it, and it kind of given life to that whole neighborhood again. When you liven up a school, you liven up the neighborhood, the community, and people look at you and respect you, and they actually, they begin to look at the school like a church, okay? So, that's a record.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I hope you support us all the way. Gracias.
Thank you. Okay, so do we have any, oh, did we, we made a motion and all that. So, board members, do you, there's discussion or questions or comments that you'd like to make?
I'd like to make one comment. Chuckie said he recognized Richard and our superintendent, but I also recognize you, Chuckie. Alice Barnes is a good friend of mine, and Peggy Budd is a lifemate, and I remember you at Alice's many gatherings and hearing your voice and hearing your spirit, hearing your energy. Absolutely love what you do and support what you do. Thank you.
Any other board members' comments?
Well, I wanted to say a couple of things. One, certainly when you look at the statistics, you know, the school is doing well. I think it was also bold of the school to talk about love and love of the students as being an important factor. Sometimes we get so caught up in education speak and so forth, we forget that that's really what transmits knowledge and preparation to students, so I think that's really great. And so, one thing that's interested me too is that you're working on developing and growing these students, and different than other charter petitions we see, we don't see these goals of huge increase in... do. Thanks.
Good afternoon. My name is Lynn Woodhead and I'm the third grade teacher at Casey Arts and Athletics Academy. I've had the privilege to serve King Chavez for 10 years in both primary and arts and athletics academies and I've seen the evolution of the school and the growth in their academic success. We have an incredible learning environment for the kids and adults and are constantly improving our systems of creating learning experiences for our kids. For example, the use of iPads, technology through the use of iPads in all subjects. Our focus is love, lifelong learning, and involving families in our educational experience. Yes, the curriculum is rigorous and yes, we are data-driven to meet the needs of our students, no matter where they are academically. However, most importantly, we are preparing the kids to face the challenges beyond the four walls of the classroom and their environments. By giving them real-world 21st century experiences, these kids are learning global awareness and social justice at an early age so they can take their experiences, education, and struggles and channel them to make their communities better. And I am so proud of that. From a teacher's perspective, they're always our kids, no matter if we have them in third grade or when they go off to high school and college. We raise them with a lot of love and we put blood, sweat, and tears into their success. We want to continue that effort. Please allow us to continue our mission by voting yes on the charter renewal. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Leanne Richardson. I'm a kindergarten teacher at King Chavez Primary Academy. This is my eighth year serving the primary academy and it has been a whirlwind of, as Lynn put it, blood, sweat, and tears, but also many celebrations and happy moments as we see our students growing taller than us and, and wiser than us in many different expertise and ways. And it has been such an amazing journey so far. King Chavez is not just a workplace for those of us who, who put it down as our employer on our taxes every year. It's not, it's not a workplace for us. It's become a way of life and a family for those of us who've really dedicated our life's career, our life's work toward educating students. It has become a passion that drives us because we believe in the positive impact that our school is making on the community. The community has so affected me and my family. My husband is also a teacher at the school. We have moved into the community and our neighbors are our students and we see them year-round and it is more of a blessing to be accepted as family into the community, not only at school but in the neighborhood. It has been something that we want to do lifelong. We're very happy to give all that we have to the school because the school gives so much back to us. It's so wonderful to work at King Chavez. I'm honored to teach with such collaborative and creative professionals and I want to say thank you, a big thank you to supporting us the past 10 years and we look forward to the future. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ebony Carr Wright and I am a parent of two children at King Chavez. One is in ours and one is in primary. And as a parent, I have noticed that the staff, one protects our students as if they're their own children. And as another, they, what drew me first to the school is that each staff member knows every child by name. Not many schools can say that and that's what made me decide to stay because they, they care about each student as if they were their own child. And they, and they cater to their individual learning abilities and social abilities and all that. Yeah, so I appreciate your support with keeping King Chavez as a charter and I hope that you keep them as a charter in the future.
So, oh, okay. So, so we're, we're over the 10-minute total time, but this is your last speaker?
Yes. Thank you. I'll make it short and sweet. Thank you very much. My name is Ramon Chucky Sanchez. I am a community liaison for the school. I taught in the classrooms there, taught music with the kids. And once again, I'm, I'm real proud to be here again in front of the school boards, like kind of going to church for me, you know? Sometimes I wore a hat, if I would've worn it, I would've took it off when I came up here. But number one is Cindy Martin, I remember the day that you were elected as superintendent and I was watching KU SI, I believe. And I said, wow. And then they mentioned you came from Central Elementary in City Heights. Am I correct? And I said, wow, that's even better because she came from the trenches. You know, if you know City Heights and Central Elementary, we know the kids that she deals with and what she dealt with at that time and probably still is now. But I knew that she had a heart for the kids and education. Thank you very much. And the only one I could mention now is, that I really know is Mr. Barrera. I'm not trying to score any points, Mr. Barrera. I'm not, I'm not trying to score any points, but man, you're still young, man. You know? You haven't changed a bit. I don't know what it is. You gotta give me the secret, but...
He's singing Happy Birthday, man.
Oh, yeah? Okay? And all the rest of you, King Chavez has done tremendous work in those neighborhoods with kids that have needed it and not just kids, but the parents, the parents, very big part of it. And it kind of given life to that whole neighborhood again. When you liven up a school, you liven up the neighborhood, the community, and people look at you and respect you and they actually, they, they begin to look at the school like, like a church, okay? So...
Thank you.
That's a red one. Thank you very much and I hope you support us all the way. Gracias.
Thank you. So do we have any, oh. Did we, we, we made a motion and all that. So board members, do you, there's discussion or questions or comments that you'd like to make?
I'd like to make one comment. Chucky said he recognized Richard and, and our superintendent, but I also recognize you, Chucky. Alice Barnes is a good friend of mine. And Peggy Bud is a life mate. And I remember you at Alice's many gatherings and hearing your voice and hearing your spirit, hearing your energy. Absolutely love what you do and support what you do. Thank you.
Any other board members' comments?
Well, I, I wanted to say a couple of things. One, certainly when you look at the statistics, you know, the school is doing well. I think it was also bold of the school to talk about love and love of the students as being an important factor. Sometimes we get so caught up in education speak and so forth, we forget that that's really what transmits knowledge and preparation to students. So I think that's really great. And so, one thing that's interested me too is that you're working on developing and growing these students. And, and different than other charter petitions we see, we don't see these goals of huge increase in enrollment. We're going to go from 200 to 300 to 400 to 500 students. And I'm just taking that, that you really are committed to doing a good job and a better job and even better job with the students you have and the new students that are coming in and looking really more for, for quality than quantity is the way that looks to me. And so I think there's a lot of reason to support this petition, but the main reason I'm going to support it is because Mr. Malik came and spoke to us about what the school means to him.
Any other board comments? So what I would like to, to just kind of wrap up and say is that you spoke about the API score being well over 800 for some years, but what I really get in terms of a best practice and understanding all of the ingredients, all of the indicators that makes a school powerful and makes our students succeed, is that student, the experience is far beyond any particular test score. Some of the things that, that I heard you say were the, the collective impact, the partnership with Cal State, San Marcos, and UCSD, the parent engagement that really works collaboratively with the teachers and really sees demonstrated in love how teachers and all staff treat the students as if they're their own. You talked about the arts integration, the restorative practices, the home visits, the home visits. The, the high expectations are very, very clear, the real-world experiences. You talked about social justice and just the way that parents, staff, students work with the whole family. And, and I wrote other things, but I can't read it right now. But my point is, they're all of the indicators that suggest an amazing school. And those are the types of best practices and innovations, if you will, that we need to spread across San Diego Unified School Districts. So I'm just speaking for the board that we appreciate working with you and that, and we're learning so much from you. You're doing a great job by our children and their families. That said, can we please vote? And that passes unanimously. So let's move on to E2. We're just going to pause for just a minute. Bye, Molly. Okay, so moving right along to E2, public hearing to consider renewal of charter petition for Iften Charter School. Okay, Ms. Susan Park?
Thank you. E2 is an information item, a public hearing to consider the level of support for Iften Charter School. It's a K8 school located at 5465 El Cajon Boulevard, which is located within the Crawford High School cluster. The overview of enrollment information and preliminary academic information is noted and staff will bring a more detailed recommendation to grant or renew at a subsequent date. I understand there are several speakers here from the school to address our board and the school has, I, I wanted to express the school has done, worked hard to limit the number of speakers and that this list was considerably larger as I'm sure they'll demonstrate in their comments.
That said, you have a total of 10 minutes, two minutes, a total of 10 minutes, two minutes each, and the speakers, and you can speak in any order that I have listed, although you have chosen just a few of the speakers that I'll read, but Mohammed Ahmed, Farah Hersi, Abdur Akim Worsame, Worsame, Ali Hori, Masla Youssef, Joe Udal, Yenab Elmi, Stephanie Lozano, Wendy, Wendy Symes, Zainab Mak Mudova, Asia, or Asia Mohammed, Samir Abdur Aska, Hassan Mohammed, Bashir Hassan, and Mohammed Ali. Speak in any order. Okay. Yes, please. And, and say your name first and then...
Sure. Good evening. My name is Abdul cream Worsame. I'm the board president of Iften Charter School. As the main entity accountable for governance, physical oversight, strategic planning, and sound international oversight, as a board, we understand that our decisions have direct impact on the ultimate success of, of or failure of our students. Iften continuously reached out other institutions like National Center for Urban School Transformation at San Diego State University to improve its overall practice, overall best practices, performance, provide executive coaching to our administration, as well as continuous professional development to our teaching staff. Speaking behind me, speakers behind me will touch on and highlight many of our successes. On behalf of Iften community, as a father of five students who all attend Iften, I ask that you kindly approve our petition. Thank you.
Thank you very much, the board president Foster, all board members, and the superintendent Martin, to giving me this great opportunity to share with you what they make of the Iften Charter School unique. My name is Ali Hori. I'm Iften Charter School principal for the last two years. Iften Charter School is a public charter, a school focusing on deserving and the need for the, the most vulnerable students with the San Diego School District. A dynamic, the combination of the students, the professional educators, and the parents is making the Iften Charter School and the activity engaging the environment and the learning, individual growth. Iften Charter School is enjoying the creative and the innovative, the environment and encouraging the inquiry, independent, and the most promoting the self-initiative and the self-directed learning. Iften, we encouraging the value and the support for the active, productive living, the service, and the community, and the mutual respect. Iften Charter School is a student-centered and deserving for the creating, the exciting for engagement environment to offer in academic excellence, advancing for the learning technique, abstract for the combination for the thinking, attention for the school, skill development, parental, the community involved with. Iften Charter School, students are the involved for their direct and pacing during the learning, the hour-talent teacher's, to differentiate the program within the students, implementing for the instructional strategy. Those strategies are the focusing, the, the inquiry strategy which they academically and the social appropriate for the gift for the students. Teachers' transition there are funds, teaching the tools, including the projector pacing and the need to base the learn activity for the multiple file, field trips and other hand-on exercise for the learning activity with core knowledge framework. The core work, the education is first, quality of the hard, hard work, love and the learning, self-confidence and the personal accountability, defensive for the safety, community involved with, community continuing for the improvement, and more. Thank you very much, all of you. I hope we will support in our petition and thank you.
Let me get my glasses. Board president Foster, board members and superintendent Martin, it's a great pleasure for me to speak with you about Iften Charter School today. But first and foremost, I would like to express my appreciation for Foster, who used to be my colleague at Mid-City, for taking out her very busy schedule to come to Iften Charter School to give the keynote speaker for our last year's eighth grade promotion. Thank you very much. And also I would like to express my thanks and appreciation to Dr. McQuarrie, who as an incoming board member, you know, accepted our request to come to school and spent the whole day governing classrooms, meeting with the teachers, speaking with the students, observing the quality of education we are providing to our kids. Thank you very much. And also I would like to thank Richard Brever. I, I remember that you were running out of your lunch break to meet with us and listen to our side of the story. Thank you very much. 10 years ago, I spoke with you from this podium, asking you, please support our petition. And that we didn't accept at that time. But I shared with you the quote from Mid-Margaret, which she says, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful committed citizens can change the world. It's the only thing that ever has." And we showed you that we made that change. We are serving the most vulnerable kids. 100% of our students are, you know, qualified for free and previous lunch, for their lunch. 83% of them are English language learners. Some of them are newcomers, coming from refugee camps, never had a pen or pencil, and didn't have any formal education, but when they come here, they're placed in the classrooms according to their ages, not their, you know, competence. And we have a newcomer program for two years. Actually, she is here, Farah, who provides that program for two years, those students to learn the literacy skills they need and the foundational skills to succeed in their classrooms. I shared with you my written report, for the sake of other speakers here, I'm going to minimize my speech to this one. We are humbly requesting you, in unison, please kindly sign up all the people who come here to support Iften Charter School. Look here. We ask you, please support our school to continue, please help us to help our students, our kids, and build their future. Thank you very much.
My name is Wendy Symes and I'm a kindergarten teacher at Iften Charter School. Iften Charter has devoted time, effort, and resources to implementing curriculum that supports the child as a whole. At the school, we are evolving as a cohesive unit, a difficult task with grades, grade levels ranging from kindergarten to eighth grade. Our staff is devoted to working as a team so that we can support our children to the best of our ability. This year, we were excited to get, get the opportunity to work with NCUST, the National Center for Urban School Transformation. With their support, we have adopted the practice of working in professional learning communities to establish a school-wide culture of building and sustaining school improvement efforts. Team leaders had the opportunity to visit EHE, a distinguished charter school, who also worked alongside NCUST. Our teachers came away inspired, inspired to work together to create an environment that supports not only student learning, but the whole child. I've been extremely excited with the progress that Iften Charter School has made over just these past couple of years. We have a drive to make ongoing improvements and excel in what we know is best for our students. Thank you.
My name is Stephanie Lozano and I'm a teacher at Iften Charter School. At Iften, we do not place all our value on high academic achievement, but rather in educating the whole child. At Iften, we are committed to the belief that character education is the shared responsibility of parents, teachers, and members of the community. This year, in support of a positive character development program, we have come together to adopt the Iften Way. The foundation of this belief is based on the demonstration of integrity, focus, tolerance, independence, and to be nurturing both in social and academic development. The Iften Way is not a character program just for students, but rather it's a way of life that all Iften staff, teachers, parents, and community members commit to. Together, we form that safe, healthy, and informed school community which provides the necessary setting for the whole child education to take place. And one of our young student leaders has come to share the Iften Way. Is that okay?
There is no way in the world that we're going to cut off an Iften student. We've been waiting for this.
This is Hassan Mohammed, first grader at Iften Charter School.
Nice.
I have the power to create a great life for myself. My character is demonstrated through high personal and academic standards. I always behave in a way that brings me closer to my goals of success in colleagues, career, and life. I respect the individual differences in my school community. I follow the rules to be my neighbor, safe, and strong to achieve my goals. I will follow the Iften Way of integrity, focus, tolerance, independence, and to win all things.
Is that, is that everyone? Well, we have 10 minutes, 10 minutes total and we have to be consistent and we did have, and we did have a little extra left. So I think that's the exclamation point. Thank you very, very much. Do we have any questions or comments from our trustees? Yes?
Sure. Yeah, I would like to acknowledge the honor that I had of visiting Iften. I want to commend you for the importance of your mission, the dedication to your effort, the commitment that you have for your task, and the love that I saw generated throughout the school and, and for your students. It was also the warm welcome that I received. As a stranger, and at that time, as a citizen, as a board member, I am proud to stand here to hear your commitment and to hear your, your testimony and we look forward to, to the next hearing.
Any other board member comments? Being that they're, they're none, I'll just wrap up by just sharing some thoughts, which is that I'm, I was really pleased to hear that you're working with NCUST and Dr. Joe Johnson and that, that you have a parent who is invested in Iften by being a proud parent of five children, who is the president of your board. So, you know, that's significant parent, parent involvement. And that you really communicated that you're student-centered and... And that you really communicated that you're student-centered and that you understand differentiated instruction and professional learning communities, and that you've even taken groups of teachers to observe, get out of their environment to observe best practices, and then come back and invest in that way into your school. And that character development is very key in talking and hearing from Hassan talk about the Iften Way. That's, in the younger ages, that's where it starts, and to build upon that really suggests that you really understand how best to orient and bring in new newcomers and really integrate them and really become part of the local and larger community. So I just, you know, wanted to say those comments and really thank you for many of your best practices, and we look forward to, you know, learning from those. And this is, you know, an informational item, and so I know that you'll come back and we'll hear from you more at that time. And...and so we're going to go ahead and move on to E3, and thank you again. Okay.
I'll move item E3.
Second.
Okay, so E3 has been moved and seconded, is to ratify the acceptance of the county registrar of voters' certified election results. We have a first and a second. I don't-
I have a...I'm not able to...what is the exact number of votes Mr. McQuarrie got?
604, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
138,604, and I like to say, likes at the ballot box.
Okay. Can we vote?
Sure.
Oh, we have a speaker. I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Can we wait for a moment so that we can actually hear you speak? Okay, go ahead. Okay.
Okay. The registrar of voter election results put you in these seats to provide a quality education for our city's children. You're not on this dais to make, to meet out political favors or to pursue personal agendas. The union contract is the greatest task that you face. That contract needs to have effective teacher evaluations so that every child in San Diego Unified has a quality teacher. Right now, there are no measurements, and there are children that are suffering because they do not have a quality teacher in their classroom. So as these results are being confirmed by this board today, I'm saying that this board needs to focus on children and not on adults and not on unions, but on the children having quality teachers in every classroom.
That wraps up public testimony. Thank you for your comments. And if there are no other speakers...oh, okay. Oh. Being that it was moved and seconded, I just have to say, we had a speaker and I just thought, I went to public comment because I'm a citizen, but anyway. Can we vote, please? Uh, yes, please. We have to make it memorable, right? Okay. There we go. Okay, yeah. So he's putting the exclamation point at the end. Oh, my gosh. Okay. So that passes unanimously. And once again, are there any other additional non-agenda items? Being that there are none, it is my pleasure and privilege to say, a meeting is adjourned, and the next meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 13, 2015.
I know it'd be just as short.
Congratulations, President Foster, on your first meeting. Well done.